November 5th, 9:30 P.M. I'm gonna call the Rockingham School Board Meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance by our esteemed guest, Mr. Clark.
Everybody ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The rest wants to be agenda? February 3rd, 9:00. Excellent. Review and approve board minutes for October 15th, 2018.
I think I have one suggested update. Uh, one. Uh, it was, um, towards the end, we were talking about the adjustment for pricing for drainage work. And the motion that we approved was 2805 for sidewalk drainage. Um, it was not an addition, the word additional needs to come out of that because we were having two different invoices.
Just write the word additional from the motion itself.
Yeah.
Got it?
I'll make a motion that we approve the board minutes as amended from Monday, October 13th.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Communication and public comments. You have one guest.
Thank you. Um, pro forma introductions. My name is David Clark. I am a member of Bellows Falls Union High School Board representing Westminster. I represent BF on the River Valley Technical Center Board. I chair the Supervisor Union Board, and I'm also one of the organizers of the alliance of our school board members. And I've got a handout, which I'm not going to speak to because I think it's pretty self-explanatory. And I do want to give you a brief, my standards, update on my trip to the State Board meeting last night, uh, last night. Last week Superintendent Pratt was also at that meeting. And additionally, last Thursday night, I hiked on up to Stowe School Board meeting. That was an emergency meeting. Maybe I'll start there first and work back. They were quite surprised to discover at Stowe that they had been merged even though they had submitted what they believed was an appropriate AGS proposal. That merger is with the towns of Elmore and Morrisville, which interestingly enough, previously merged. So it's very much a direct comparable to the situation we have in this district with an Athens, Grafton, Joint Compact Board, and the town of Westminster all being recommended for merger when, at least my belief in our case, we submitted a comprehensive and persuasive AGS, and that's Alternative Governance Structure Proposal, to remain as independent boards within the WNESU district. The State Board did not seek to merge Rockingham School Board, at least at that time, but what I want to caution you about was that the State Board, when they had reconsidered Athens, Grafton, Westminster, that was the result of a 4-4 decision at their previous meeting. And incidentally enough, they came charging out of the lunchroom in a matter of speaking and unanimously voted to merge our three towns in this district with very little discussion. So it would appear that the story in that regard will be continued. And I'm here because the other thing I want to mention is that Rockingham is out of the woods for the time being, but maybe not completely out of the woods because after the State Board disposed of the school boards, what we call Freudian slip there, if you will, they turned their attention to Supervise Reunion Boards. And it was only the efforts of the Secretary of Education that persuaded the State Board that Supervise Reunions and mergers at this time would probably make a difficult situation, more difficult. The proposal was to merge Wyndham Northeast with Wyndham Southeast Supervise Reunion Boards, but that came off the table. So these are interesting times we're living in, and I would just like to conclude my remarks by saying I see at least one budget book here on the table, and I think I'm going to take in whatever intelligence I can glean from your discussion because what your budget probably has some influence on what we budget at the high school. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, David. You have any other communications or public comments? Um, while we did adjust the agenda, I was wondering if we would, would the board be open to consider moving 9E up to right after policies since we have a visitor who probably doesn't want to sit through all of our policies? I don't believe we have anything for policies. So let's do 9E now. Request from parents, community for installation of playground fencing at Central Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Amy Tittle. I am a parent of children in the school district, and I'm representing a group of parents who unfortunately were not be able to all be here tonight. What we're asking is for permission from the school board because we believe that's our first step in the process. We would like to ask for permission from the school board to move forward with getting a permit from the town to install a six-foot stockade fence at the central school playground. It would be on the north side, just one, it's 101.5 feet, and if you're standing on the steps of the school, looking out towards church place, there's a house, a driveway, and then the school with the fence, and there's shrubs in front of the fence. And right now currently, there's space between the shrubs and the fence. And while the teachers and staff at Central School are fantastic about asking the kids to not be behind the shrubs, they're constantly asking the kids. So it's sort of that, you know, it's great they're doing it, but at the same time, they're constantly having to do it. And so what happened over the summer was it came to light that some parents who are spending time with their little kids were finding a lot of drug paraphernalia in the bushes. There's some people at the houses that are not exactly people we want, sort of watching over our children while they're playing. So a group of parents got together and wondered about putting a fence there. And exactly the details of how that would work, Keith and I spoke about possibly figuring out how to adhere the six-foot stockade fence to the chain link fence so we wouldn't break the integrity of the actual chain link fence that encompasses the whole playground right now. That's kind of where we're at. So we believe that our first step is to ask the board for permission to move forward with a permit request and then the process to put it up, which would all be something that parents and community members would do. There would be nothing more for the board other than to approve it.
So it sounds like you've talked to Keith about this?
Yeah, we've talked about it.
Yes.
Yeah. It would act as a privacy sort of fence. The way it sets up now, the trees haven't fully grown in and covered up that whole fence, so there's gaps and whatnot. And, you know, as Amy described, it's, it's a kind of a dicey scene between where the kids are playing and the neighborhood at that point. And I just think it's, it would be good for everybody, I think, to have that in place.
So what I'm hearing is you're in favor of?
I'm in favor. My, my only concern is can we do it with something that, and Rick will like to hear this, that doesn't require maintenance?
Yeah. Well, Rick was gonna be my next. Move to.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, the first step would, like Amy said, would be to inquire at the town hall as far as what kind of permit we would need to. And I don't know what the zoning is there, so we'd have to.
You need a permit for anything over 42 inches, I think.
Yeah.
I, I went down and spoke with.
You did?
Yes, thank you. Weiss, and he, and I had a quick discussion about what we would need to do. He gave me the paperwork for it, and we kind of don't have to, we have a condensed version of it because it's not, you know, we don't have to measure it. So he was willing to work, help me out to get the permit put together, so. I mean, we still have to present that, too.
Of course, the interest of all the viewers at home, where's the funding coming from?
This is something that we, as parents, would pull together the money to, and our time and effort to put the fence up.
Mr. Pratt, how does the logistics of something like that work?
It's a fund raising for, you know, parents, whether it be through a parent group or parenting community, it's all into fundraising, fundraising policy would have to go to it.
So I think maybe if you work with Keith to get the fundraising form filled out and work with Mr. Schuman to make sure that it meets his needs, I think the next step is getting the, the fundraising form brought to us. And I think at the same time, we could approve, I don't know what else we would need to approve, fundraising and the installation.
Yeah, we'll probably find raises written up if, you know, if they're gonna do the work and everything like that. It just has to be included in the form so the board knows exactly what they're approving. And, you know, we've checked into the liability piece of it and all of that.
Okay.
Any of the other board members have any comments or thoughts or discussions? Well, I don't want to speak for everybody, Rick.
You covered what I was thinking.
Okay. So you have a speaking?
It does. I'll talk to you.
Yeah.
Thank you for moving me up. Five kids are ready to have haircuts, so thanks.
Keith will check into the liability. Yeah. Rick said he volunteers on.
You mean that, Rick?
Speaking in the third person, that's weird.
Um, reports superintendent. So this month, you'll find two different reports in your folder. One is a central office report, which entails a monthly report out from Dr. Carey, Assistant Superintendent, as well as Nancy Wilkins, the Curriculum Director, Angie Haas, the Special Ed Director, Edie Cole, the Business Manager, Harley Sterling, the Director of School Nutrition, and Ricky Adams, who is the Technology Coordinator. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to get this out every month from the board so it gives you a better understanding of what's going on within all the departments, not just on the superintendent's office, and.
Is it uploaded? They've just uploaded it.
I just uploaded it. It wasn't in the packet, but I realized it wasn't in there, so. I'll also repost it on my site so you can look at it that way as well. And the other report is just, it's a superintendent's, kind of just what I've been doing through the previous month, and you'll see on October there, and it just gives you almost a day-to-day account of where I've been and what I've been doing. And so those are the two reports in there. So at any point you have any questions on anything in those reports, feel free to give me a call or send me an email, and I can elaborate more on it if needed.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. Pratt on that?
A question, but I think it's very helpful. I think it would be helpful to put it on your blog or on the website so that way the community people can look it up.
Yeah, I'll always put it on the, present it to the board first before putting it on the community site so the board has a chance to review it before I open it up to the, to the general public.
Okay. Principals' reports. We were gonna skip this month because.
I was supposed to say something, do you have a guess?
Yeah.
Yes.
So when I interviewed in 2012 for the principalship at Saxon Center for Elementary School, one question I was asked was, if you were offered this job, how long do you plan to stay? And at that point, I said four years. Now I'm year seven, and it's been an absolute joy to be at such a sweet school, but I am going to retire from this current school. And I submitted a letter to her sent.
That's seven years?
Seven years.
Well, both congratulations.
Thank you.
So do we have to formally accept her letter at some point, or?
Yes.
Or review?
Or review? But I assume we're not doing that because you could.
The letter's in there. Does everyone else want to wait till next time when you have a chance to read her letter if you want to?
It's a bunch of different, like you just said.
You're gonna say no?
You can't. I think we can go forward now. That's my feeling. Most people want to go ahead.
Do you want to make the motion? Or someone wants to make the motion?
So what would be my, I'd make a motion to accept the letter of retirement from Nancy Erickson?
Sure.
For the school in size of the elementary.
Get that, Josh.
Oh, at the end of this school year.
And they go June 30th.
Is there a little countdown calendar on the wall?
Any discussion?
I'm afraid I didn't go. All right, right.
Any discussion? All in favor of accepting Nancy's letter of resignation or retirement, letter of retirement supplement?
Yes.
Letter of retirement? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
So will the ESU, and assuming we'll start process at some point, I'm not sure whether that'll happen after New Year or something?
Yeah. And it'll come up a little, Nancy's retiring, so just here are the resources as well to be part of that process.
Do you have any bombshells you want to drop on us?
I'm not sure I'm ready for another one.
Business manager, should we just do our, wait till our budget?
Yeah, I'm all set for right now.
WNESU Board, Mr. Clark spoke most of what's going on at the SU, but I don't believe we've had an SU meeting since our last meeting, have we?
Yeah, we, yeah, it was the one I made because I was in the board.
Oh, that's right.
That meeting was a lot of discussion. We were getting ready for the State Board of Education meeting that followed Monday that David spoke about.
To kind of throw everything we've been, yeah, I mean, working towards into a tizzy.
To bring, I can bring anyone up to speak here a little bit. Yeah, so that meeting, we did discuss a lot about, you know, the what-ifs and, you know, the different options. We're trying to anticipate what the State Board of Education might do. Well, we found out on Monday what it didn't. Mr. Clark alluded to that, and what it pretty much is, is that even though the Agency of Education accepted our alternative structure proposal, the State Board of Education did not. They went against the recommendation of, they voted against the recommendation of the Agency of Education to consolidate Westminster, Athens, and Grafton to one school district. And so, and they did, and it was done to a majority of the alternative structures that were accepted by the AWE and recommended to the AWE, to the State Board of Education. There were very few that they accepted. So, you know, it seems to me from, you know, and what David alluded to, there's, there's a lot of upset communities out there. Westminster, Athens, and Grafton is not alone in regards to the forced mergers. And so you anticipate going to see a lot, I'm assuming in paper, and side conversation in regards to what the next steps are and what that's going to look like. As a superintendent, you know, I'm going to continue moving forward with preparing the articles and everything we have to do on my track, but the boards and the community might decide to go another route. And that's, they can do that, but as a superintendent, I can move forward with what the, the state is asking the communities to do. And so, yeah, I mean, it's going to be one of those things I think we should keep in the agenda, continue to talk about. And keep in mind, I think it's important for the community to know, is that it's, it's a governance structure that they're, they're consolidating districts. The state has no say over, you know, what's, you know, closing schools, that's totally left up to the public to vote on. And so we're not talking about consolidated schools, we're talking about consolidating school districts. And that of Athens, Grafton, and Westminster. And what that means is that there'll be one budget, there'll be one district, there'll be one board. In these cases here, the towns would end up going to Australian ballot. And so a lot of concerns with just causes, you're losing some of that local control you have in each of those towns when you're stuck going to the Australian ballot. So I just keep an eye on things. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out and let me know. We want to be as transparent as possible with the public and the communities and work with them, the boards and everything, but the same, in the same breath, it's, you're gonna see a lot of pushback from a lot of different communities, and I believe Westminster, Athens, and Grafton are going to be amongst those. So what that means down the road, we don't know, but that's pretty much where we are right now. Any questions?
We have, we still have more Act 46 discussion for later if we're on, or if you want to just, anything about that?
I just have one question, and is it supposed to be on the agenda at some point? Are we supposed to decide what we're doing with the School Board Association fee? Does that kick back to all the different?
Yes.
And I would say that would fall into the Act 46 discussion.
I would disagree, but.
Well.
We need to.
I mean. It's tied into it some, in some way, but.
In some way, it's mostly tied into it with, due to our, the ESU's displeasure with the VSDA's handling of Act 46 is my interpretation. Am I not wrong there?
I agree with that.
Okay, moving right along then for now. Committees, I don't believe we have any committee work. So we will step right up to Edie and the beginning of our fiscal year 20 budget.
All right. Well, your budget's online. I didn't get a chance to put your budget in the middle school brick that you sent. Basically, the throughout budget is, most of that is what I fill in. And I've pretty much level funded everything because I'm not really sure, the ESU, of course, hasn't really started, so the assessments are all level funded. Preschool tuition, that's determined by the NEEP CPI, which doesn't come out until November 15th. So until we get that rate, we don't know how much this year's rate is going up or down. Retirement stipend, the first item is, we haven't gotten anything back, it's still too early for that. I have put in what I've known, like the bond payments are in here, and.
Did we do the retirement stipend, or was that just the?
We did, last year we offered it.
I think the board has to approve it, right?
Yeah.
And then by the first part of December, we usually know if anyone's going to take it, and then we can adjust the budget.
We usually vote on, we usually vote to probably no percent.
You'd want to do it this month so that you could get the letter out and you could do it in two weeks on your next agenda. And then get the letters out, and anybody who's interested, we would put their stipend in, and then we usually put a master's five years experience for their position that they're leaving.
Do we want to have that discussion at this meeting and vote to approve it or not? We'll put it in the budget discussion for next time.
We, I think we should, it should be, if we need to put it on the agenda before we vote on it, we should just go, we should put it on the agenda for next meeting.
So let's make sure we're talking about that.
Or have on the agenda, yeah.
Yeah, we should, is everyone going to be available for, or enough of us going to be available for the next, it's the 19th, which is Thanksgiving.
Oh, I have it here on the.
The Monday before Thanksgiving.
I am.
You're not here? You'll be here. I am here. You weren't depending, yes, I will be here. So that, that means four of us would be here anyways.
Yeah.
We need three, we've got five. We've got gravy now, babe. You know how exciting that is for us.
So Edie, was there other things in the budget so far that?
Yeah, I could pretty much do like the board's budget. Look at it if you want adjustments to it. I, all of our insurances have gone down that we get through the Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust, except that we do know that there's going to be an increase in the transportation insurance. Right now, based on what we pay, each district gets about $25,000 worth of insurance and they're paying out far more than that. So that one will take a hike, that's in the ESU, but the others have actually gone down. I did estimate a contingency fund of salaries and benefits for next year. And there were some things that, you know, based on what we've been spending, like legal services, I dropped it from $3,000 to $1,000. Most legal issues are done at the ESU now, so unless there's something odd there, you really, and we could probably even cut it down lower than that. I had, in last year, you spent $494, so. I had, in last year, you spent four hundred and ninety-four dollars, so. But I tried to not slash your budget, but try to be as conservative as I possibly could with the items that I do know. I know what our audit's going to be, 'cause we did a three-year bid, and counting FY18, we've got two more years that they bid on. So, that's covered. Like our property and general liability insurance went down five thousand, so we've got some savings there. I did an estimate on the crossing guards, based on what we're actually paying last year and this year, so a lot of those I could come up with what I consider a reasonable amount. However, the SU assessments, which is a good share of the throughout budget, I mean, the SU really hasn't even begun, so I don't have that. I do have all your bonds on page nine of thirty-seven. I downloaded all of the bond schedules, and I do have those in. The only thing I'm never sure of is the interest payments for the QSCAB. The, when we first received that bond, the way that it works is the money goes into escrow, and at the end of the twenty years, the person or persons that bought the bonds gets their money back. So, it goes into escrow. About every six months, there's about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in interest due. When we first got this qualified school construction bond, the feds were taking care of the interest. And so, now we're paying about six point six percent of the interest, so right now, I have it estimated at about twenty-three thousand. I just got the paperwork tonight. I asked the director at the municipal bond bank to send me what he had, and he does have it for this year. It actually went down from last year, but I got it right before I came, so I haven't adjusted it. But next year could go up. The feds are back and forth on this, but twenty-three thousand is way better than three hundred and forty thousand a year that we would be paying if they were not picking up the interest. And, let's see, what else? I have not had a chance yet to double-check and make sure that all the salary and benefits that I pulled from the current year came through correctly. I'm not expecting to see any issues, but I always check. Sometimes there's a glitch, and I, I just feel better knowing that the numbers are correct. But, other than that, it's a first draft. It gives you an idea of what it looks like. If you see any areas in the throughout that you think that I've put too much money in or too little, please let me know. But, and I'll keep updating it as I get more information. So, we'll see. And then, the principals have put in their budgets, except for Keith, and then I put in his actuals from FY18 last year, so that we had some numbers in there. Rick did send Karen his budget for the middle school. His usually does not go in under the first draft, 'cause he usually has research and figure out what he's got.
Right, and it's still a draft, so.
Yeah, yeah, and yours will change.
I've gotta talk with the principals about.
Yeah. So, but I think for the first draft, I mean, it's more than we've had in the past. Usually, the first draft has been pretty vacant. So, I, I think by giving us fewer meetings, I think we're gonna get better information.
I was glad you mentioned the principals putting in. I just wanted to make sure that your voices in this process are really important, because we can learn the ground in the buildings, and really think about your needs in the buildings, and let's make sure that we get those into the discussions. Because hearing your voice in this process is important.
What about staffing?
That we have not discussed yet.
Is that like in one of the future budget?
No, we usually, I uploaded the current year proposed salary and benefit spreadsheet, and then Christine was kind enough to go through and do the actual for this year. And if you look at the end of the actual, on the middle of the last page, if you take what we budgeted, and what we're actually paying out now, plus the contingency, because that was actually money set aside for salary and benefits, we're thirty-three hundred to the good. So, in the current year, what we budgeted is almost right on with what is actually happening.
Thirty-two hundred?
Yeah. Way over, yeah, in the right, in the peak. And, so, I have not talked to you all yet. I was hoping to do that tonight. If you, any of you saw any staffing changes, need more staff, less staff. Actually, Karen did tell me, as soon as I go back and do the comparison, I will make that change. And, but I don't know that if Nancy and Keith have any changes, or Karen has any other changes. But, yeah, so, it's pretty much, it's in there as, the same as it is for this year. So, but, yeah, now's the time, if additional staffing needs to be included, or less staffing somewhere, now's the time.
Well?
Well, I mean, so you guys probably aren't prepared to think about that tonight, but by our next budget meeting, you should, you know, think about the staffing needs, if there's any issues that you might have.
I'd quite be dear throw in special ed and the staffing in that regard, if that can play out this year.
Oh, maybe tomorrow.
So, that's at the SU level, so?
Yeah. Big jump for somebody else.
But that probably does interface with them, how many like, non-special ed pairs you might need.
You could check in with the ID at any point to see, 'cause we've already, we've already been looking at it, to see what these, as far as you can tell right now, we're anticipating any changes regarding special educators in the building.
So, Edie alluded to it, just to let you guys know. I don't know how long ago, but my librarian was cut down to four days a week, and I'd like to have a librarian there five days a week, and I'd be able to open my library for students every day during school day. Right now, it's kind of hard, and it's not open on Fridays, and it's not gonna hold enough for students, et cetera. And, so, that is the one change that I'm proposing, that we have a library, my librarian go from point eight to one after eight.
And when you said you, you level funded everything, but you said you did have some input from them, or this was just Karen?
Just Karen, just Karen, and I had marked it in red that, on the actual sheet, that...
Right, on the, on the salary and benefits, but on the, on the rate expenditure budget, that's all just straight here?
Right, it's status quo. I have not had a chance to go through all the salary and benefits and make sure they're correct. But I will by your next meeting.
Okay. Sounds like an easy budget here this year, almost, 'cause I'm not having anything.
Moving through the process.
I know, but usually even at this point, often there's just like, a lot more asks already on the table than.
But if we can get it uploaded, so, 'cause I did look, I think around two, to see what was uploaded, and I don't think it was there yet, or whenever I looked today.
Yeah. I can't remember when I uploaded it the first time, and then I redid the actual expenditure budget. It may have been asked for too.
But if it could be earlier, I'd be gonna maybe.
It would have been. I'm still buried in the uniform chart of accounts. I'm actually finishing up the SU. I'm in the grants, and then I've got revenues, and then I'm going to do a happy dance, because it will, yeah. It has been a nightmare.
Because we're trying to switch over to the account system that they want us to use, while trying to do the same budget simultaneously, so things are a little slower than they usually are because of all that.
Very understandable. I just can't digest it.
No, no, and I understand that. I tried to give it to you the Friday before your meeting on Monday, so you've got time to look at it, and this week, it just didn't happen. Actually, I was going to work on it Saturday night, and I lost power for nine and a half hours, so my internet went, my water went, everything went, so somebody else had other plans for me, I guess.
Anyone else have any questions for Edie or around the budget? Lou, you're kinda new to the process.
I don't know where I would start with my questions.
Sorry?
I said, I don't know where I would start with my questions, so I feel like this is probably just a listening time, yeah.
Well, if you come up with any, give me a call, or write them down for the next meeting, whatever you're comfortable with, and I'll do my best to try to answer it.
All right. So, one thing, I, I don't know how we address this, but just, you know, in the quick, you know, we always have a lot of funds left over, it seems like, and wondering if it's worth our while to consider how to, like?
Avoid that.
Avoid that this year? You know, if you look at like, the level funded, it seems like there's.
Well, it's only been a couple of years, and mostly, it's been due to things out of our control, like special ed. I mean, you know, positive favors, and that's been good. I mean, the only thing that wasn't in our control, in my understanding, is mostly the tuitioning students, and we have been kind of conservative, because that's something we've been known over the years.
And especially cost always a moving target.
Yeah.
It could go the other way, too, and all of a sudden, it's more of a deficit.
I'm sure all of you do hear from people out in the world of like, you know, why does it cost so much? Why does it cost so much? When we budget, we own, they, they often ask that question after town meeting, when we're saying we'd like to reallocate our surplus, so.
Although they're always happy that they have a surplus versus.
Yeah. A surplus should stay within three to five percent of your budget. It, so this is high?
This year?
Yeah.
For eighteen, yeah.
So, I just wanna put out there that we should, we should, I think, keep that in the back of our minds.
But I guess Edie, you know, the question is, I mean, so there's the things that are out of our control that lead to the surplus.
Right. Oh, yeah, I don't think anyone over-budgeted or tried to pad the budget, it's just.
If there's anywhere that you can think besides tuitioning students that we might look at?
Right.
Then, you know, maybe just come with a recommendation or suggestion to look at certain line items.
And I know we're looking at, from the SU level, we're looking at overall, you know, just how we do business and make us do, especially in the special ed five oh four, because that is the, you know, one of the largest areas that we really don't have control over. So, I'm working with the director of special ed, and we're having a outside company come in to do a full kind of audit of practices and looking through everything to see if we can be more efficient in that area, in an area that we have very little control, but it might be ways that we can do it better.
Yeah, and I wasn't meaning it in a negative way, I mean, I think our surpluses are due to a number, like, the things that are not within our control, that we've been fortunate to have come out on the good side of, and I think good budget management from our administration and staff, you know, they've been doing a good job of that, you know.
Yeah, there are things that you can't control.
Right.
People leave, less expensive people come in, or someone changes from family insurance to two-person or single. There's a lot of things in your budget you cannot control, and, you know, that's why I did the un-audited financial on your surplus, so that you all had an understanding where it came from, because if anyone asks, we'll be able to tell them. I should upload that, I have not, but, yeah, that we end our budget the beginning of January, and it's a year and a half later before it's finished. And none of us have a crystal ball, so we do the best we can.
Okay, so there's no more questions for Edie or anything on the budget? Board goals, did everybody get to enlighten themselves with?
I, where was it?
I, I. It was not in the folder, it was in the...
It was in a separate folder.
Well, it's just in the general documents, I had searched for it.
So, I didn't see it, and so I, I did look for it.
My recommendation, because we have sort of, we have other like, discussion from our meeting, so I would be willing to go through and sort of create a draft for us to discuss at the next meeting, at the next week. Wait, that's two weeks?
I could, the next month.
I could do it in the next month.
I say the next meeting, you're not gonna be at?
Yeah. I can't, I can't, the next meeting, I can't do anything, but I'd be willing to do that for two times, you know? So, because right now, it's, we've got stuff in the notes, and we have stuff in the draft.
I would be grateful for that, and then I, then I would be able to look at it, too, if you show me where it is.
I'm sending you a link to it right now.
Okay.
I'm sending you.
On my, on my email?
Your W N S U email.
Okay.
You, Lou, Ed, Margot, and if anybody else who needs a link to it. Okay.
Paul, I think on the agenda?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, do we want it on the agenda for the nineteenth, or the meeting?
Both.
Okay, I won't have something prepared.
No, but if.
Well, we can wait till the December meeting, unless there's urgency.
Doesn't have to be urgency, but if we, if, if the four of us review them and have anything that we want to suggest or to Margot, we can just review them next week. Doesn't have to be long, about this long would be good. Update on handicap parking at Bellows Falls Middle School. So, my question about this was just making sure that we stayed in compliance, so as long as we're in compliance, I'm good with whatever y'all work out, unless somebody else has questions or concerns, but Deborah came to us last year about this, and I just wanted to make sure that we did our due diligence and did whatever we need to do to stay in compliance with handicap parking.
There's no change from when I booked last school board meeting, you know, and I'm not sure anything's going to be done before winter sets in, and... You know, and I'm not sure anything's going to be done before winter sets in and, you know, there's ricks, there's a lot of.
Definitely not, yeah. No, as soon as we'll be done, it would be the summer.
Right, and some, since, and part of what I took my takeaway from was last time is since we don't have any parking, there's not much opportunity for us to create handicap parking, so.
Yeah, and from the outline I got from, from Everhammond, it doesn't look like we could do it in front of the school anyway, what we originally wanted to do.
So do we have any sort of a plan in place if we add, like a handicap student or teacher concern? And you don't, you say, I'll get back to you if you want.
Right now, we do have a teacher that has some physical limitations and she parks as close as she can to the school, which means she parks on the east side of the building there in the first spot and is able to access the open avenue.
So maybe we can add that to the nine A, the parking passes discussion and see if there's something we could do with the town to get a reserve spot or something if we had issue like that. Capital improvement plan, unless anyone, is there any other questions about handicap parking? Capital improvements plan.
That, that'll be forthcoming, yeah. Been mainly twenty, FY twenty right now, so. And again, that's something I'll be discussing with the principals.
And I think this, I think this is looking at like a three to five year plan with all the surplus ones.
Right, which I had given you several years ago and, yeah, I did look over that and we actually did pretty well on, on that, so. I think there's some new stuff.
Okay, because I, I don't, like I said, I don't have my notes from before, but we do have.
We have those several years of surplus that we want.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so we want to make sure that we're, we, you know, thinking forward on buildings.
So when people ask us, what are you doing with all that money? YMCA building update, they gave the owner three weeks to get some, it was in the paper the other day, so I'm assuming everyone saw it. They gave the owner three weeks to get some prices on getting the roof fixed, which. I don't know what that means, and then I saw something about they were gonna order some fencing or barriers.
So both the village and the town, who's sharing the barriers. Have you heard anything, Marky?
No, I haven't.
The town is really following through and.
The village is, yeah, the village is staying on top of it. The town seems to be supporting.
Right, yes.
And, and, you know, reacting to the request from the village. I'll try to remember, I missed this last meeting. I'll try to remember, go to the next one just to kind of hear firsthand. If anyone likes to join me there more than welcome. There's nothing more fun than trust these people. But I think, you know, I think they are on it. Act forty-six. Is there enough said about that? Do you want to add?
I don't think so.
Any more discussion about that?
Do we need, well, this is not quite Act forty-six related, although it's by chain related, I guess. Do we need to put on our agenda for next time, discussion around? Those stuff from the SU board?
Which stuff?
Asking for to talk.
Oh, about the dues to the V S V A?
Does that need to go on our agenda?
I don't know, I mean, aren't we supposed to promote on that or did I misunderstand?
I believe the SU chair is here, we could ask him. I believe what they'd asked us to do was come back to our boards and ask what we would like to do with our V S B, leftover V S V A dues or the V S V A dues that we're not paying. I guess any, any monies that are left at the SU get distributed back to the boards at the end of the day anyways, correct? So unless we wanted to request a specific purpose for those funds, I don't know. Mr. Clark, do you have any comments on this topic?
My response to your question is that we know what school boards pay proportionally for those dues. The SU board did, I suppose, use the term embargo them. Rockingham has a share, which off the top of my head, probably about sixty-five percent across the four towns. And my advice to you would be to do nothing at all until the state board issues its final rulings. It is entirely possible, since these rulings were kind of what the nomination was. Not tentative, but.
Preliminary?
Pardon me?
The preliminary?
Yes, so they will either ratify their actions or revisit specific AGS proposals before they present their final draft, if you will, at the end of November. At that point, it's, of course, entirely possible they may decide to go ahead and try to merge SUs and that might possibly have impacts here that Rock board may wish to have some influence over. So my short answer is take no action at this time.
I guess I would agree with that. I think, I think in a way we're in a, in a holy pattern and I'm kind of wondering if we should, at some point in the near future, make, and maybe this will come up at the SU meeting, but I, I would encourage us to have another joint meeting of the boards, like we have, we already have one planned. I think that we should go ahead and move ahead with that and have some frank discussions with our neighbors on how everyone wants to kind of move forward at this point, what, whatever, you know, how do we? Now what happens? I mean, for us, it's pretty straightforward. We move ahead like we were, would have if the alternative government structure had been approved. But how is that going to impact working with our neighbors at this point and what, you know? Where do we go from, where do we go now? And joint meetings so far are scheduled in December. I'm gonna use it, I can't, I have it off the top of my head and I can call it up. Yes, sir, Mr. Clark?
I just want to caution this board that under Act forty-six and under the state board's various authorities, they could decide to assign Rockingham to a different SU. And that's why I'm saying, don't do anything until the final report has been issued.
Yep. Yep, I, I think we're all kind of in agreement there, but I think it's still wise of us to continue our communal discussions. Okay, unless anyone else has anything about Act forty-six to discuss, we'll move on to our new business for discussion and action. Parking passes for Bellas Falls Middle School, faculty and staff.
I don't have anything new on this other than, you know, to the best of my knowledge, nobody's received a ticket in the past couple of weeks. So that's a nice thing. But, yeah, I.
Has, has anybody from your office reached out to the town? The town manager?
Well, the last time we reached out for him was last Friday for the tech boot up day. We just wanted to make sure that people's parking up front didn't get tickets like they did last year and we did not get any tickets. Are we looking for specific passes to?
I was, that's, I was wondering if it was worthwhile to ask for both maybe central and the middle school, if the teachers and staff could get some sort of a little thing to hang from their mirror or decal or something that says, I'm working at the school, please don't give me a ticket. And I don't know if that would go through the town manager or the police department or.
It appears that people that park on Cherry Hill Street that live there, et cetera, now have some type of parking sticker permit thing, et cetera. And best of my knowledge, that's new this year, that that has not been done before. So they will now ticket those residents.
And I think that's kind of what prompted this discussion is to, like, they're issuing resident parking permit stickers now.
Yeah.
To the district town. So I think, yeah, that is what prompted the discussion was if they're looking for these permits and ticketing vehicles that don't have them, are staff members, faculty members gonna get ticketed?
Right.
So is this a conversation that needs to have? We have, you had a conversation with somebody at the town.
That's what, asking Mr. Pratt, asking perhaps, can we jump to town manager? Town manager and maybe the police chief to find out, you know? Because the, the town manager could say, you know, that, I assume they would need to talk to the police chief, but what's, what's a good signal for the police to say, um, yeah, we don't need to ticket that car?
Especially here if there's residents that are getting.
And this assumes that your staff would appreciate such a.
Yes, I know, I know that they would. I know in my past, we, as a school district, had little stickers that designated, you know, they, part of District Ninety, District Ninety-one staff, little stickers that you can put in the back of your window. And so that told the parking patrol or whatever that, you know, don't ticket us because the cars are gonna be there more than three hours. Because there was like three hour parking in the surrounding streets, other than if you didn't have the thing. So, you know, that's something that we can easily look into, just getting that designated, you know, W N E S U staff.
Right.
But I, we want the town to know ahead of time, like, these, we'll, we'll get them. You know, we don't want resident stickers, we understand, but we would like some preferential understanding of our parking needs, I guess is the best way to put it.
I'm sure Mr. Pratt can do a very good job of relaying that message to the town manager and police chief. Discussing on Golda Hill property, I don't think there's much to discuss. Did everyone see a little map? I said, how about that landlocked piece of property?
Well, I mean, I guess the discussion is, is what do we do with this property? We have this property, we don't ever foresee it being physically, you know? Do we want to move forward with trying to sell it?
That's one thing. Another thing that I thought of is, do we somehow, would it be somehow of use to the high school or the River Valley Tech Center if we let them use it for a forestry class or?
Is there even a right of way to get?
There's a right of way to get to it. You know, just trying to think outside the box because it's, it's not much use except to probably the two people who own property on either side of it. And I can send you the map of this property. It's up off School Bus Depot Road. Um, because both on the high school board and the River Valley Tech Center board, correct?
That's correct.
So it doesn't cost us anything to have it sit there, but on there, you know, I, one of my reasons for bringing it up was after Chris Kibbe left, I didn't want it to go like forgotten in thirty years from now, so please.
Was that twelve acres? Is that what it is?
I think it's seven.
Seven acres, I think, yeah.
I think it's seven.
I mean, if there can't be school use made of it, it seems like it wouldn't make sense to, let's see, see what a realtor thinks they would be selling for.
Yeah, I know Chris Kibbe talked to a couple of realtors.
And it's not available?
Not really, because I don't, I, yeah, it didn't seem, it didn't seem like a very attractive property. A couple of realtors told him like, yeah, I could, but I'd rather not.
Things like steep terrain.
No, it's just the way that it's landlocked.
Well, if you have a right of way.
Do a right of way, yeah.
But isn't it along kind of the gorge there?
Yeah.
Because it goes up to the river.
Right, so the other, what I would, my other thought would be that we approach, because there's two sizable properties that kind of hug it in and maybe approaching those, you know, those two property owners and see if one or both, one of them is interested and if we want to try to sell it. But it's a process to go through to sell, for us to sell a piece of real estate. We have to have a special, you know, town meeting and have to have a special vote.
Maybe the school also start like a crew program, it's right along the waters.
Or a train spot, it's right along the river.
I think there's railroad tracks, a gorge, the river, you know?
I'm thinking like further down to where it can delve.
Maybe it's there, but I don't think, I think it's sort of in between. I think it's still a hell of a.
You probably know the area better than. A lot of us here, so it's this seven point five acres. So the right of way is, I think goes through these people's. Or, no, I think the right of way actually comes through here, through this property and then through that one.
Well, that's steep down through there.
Yeah.
If, if it goes down that way, that's like a problem.
Yeah. Waterfront though, it should be the eye line.
Yeah.
As long as it don't fall off the edge. Well, I mean, I guess this would give the time to think about it, because if you did want to, you know, or wait a year.
Yeah, market buying might go up by then, you never know. Put a van.
But this would be the time to start figuring out getting a, a big town meeting agenda.
Turn into a parking lot with a shuttle.
And we need a shuttle driver, okay.
Yeah.
Or maybe I'll, maybe I'll, yeah, call Chuck and see if he can find, if he can tell me who the two, who the abutters are to it.
If you go on the GIS mapping for the town, it'll tell you.
I can print that.
Town Rockham as GIS mapping, Google search, it'll bring you to the link.
Yeah, no, that's where I looked it up there.
Yeah, there's a way, there's different menu options on the side and you can.
I can send it to you.
It would give you the parcel owner name.
Yeah, Rocky, do you want to screen?
Yeah, please, just for.
Yeah, I was surprised that Rockham was like that up to date.
They're one of the most up to date ones.
Yeah, it's really awesome. I wish they had the town's run.
It hasn't been that way that long though, if you was wondering, last couple of years or something.
Surplus discussion.
Isn't the surplus discussion related to the?
Yes.
The capital improvement thing that we don't have information on?
Yes. I just want to help you keep track of this stuff. Is this, this is, this was for the new projected surplus, I believe, was what this discussion was about, correct? How we were going to? Because this is this year's, right?
That's what ended in June. And if you do nothing with it or don't plan on having the voters vote to set it aside for either future budgets or for capital improvement, and all rolls into the FY twenty budget that we're working on. The problem with doing that is all in one year is you're gonna see a huge dip in your taxes and then the following year they're gonna go sky high, so.
I think what I would, because this is confusing enough, because we have had surpluses for the last few years.
Yeah.
Can we get a sort of an accounting of how much we have for each fiscal year?
Oh, for each fiscal year? The others have been taken care of. I mean, they're, they're used except for, there's two hundred thousand set aside for the budget we're working on. That came from FY seventeen, so.
Is that the only one?
Yep, everything else has been taken care of.
And so this is a. this is, we have to work, we have to figure out what to do with this whole number here, so we haven't, we haven't allocated any of that yet.
What's that now?
Nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and six dollars and thirty-six cents.
But we had last, we talked about it, we had sort of a, well, like a rough, like, hey, we could do this, which was breaking our heart into but I can't remember what that is.
We could set aside money for twenty-one and twenty-two budgets. Um, I also had said that we expect to spend about a hundred and three thousand of your capital projects. You could replace that. I would wait until Rick has a chance to look and see what we need for capital project. You may want to
Yeah.
more than replace what you've used.
That was, I spent my notes from last time, and so last time, same sheet that Edie just gave me, we said to create a three to five year plan, so we can think about how to.
So I think we need to hear the, the plan.
Right.
And then we can discuss this further.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's all on you, Ricky.
I'm fine.
Approval of fund when the expenditures, do we have any? Yeah, those are the funds that we're talking about.
I highlighted them.
What went through the audit, is that correct, Edie?
Yeah, they would like us to get rid of all these little pockets of money. The only thing I, I want to be cautious of is that whatever monies we use, we have to make sure that we're using it for what it was originally intended. So if somebody donated money for technology, we don't want to be using it for anything else.
So basically, they're asking us to clean up our books by consolidating.
Right, and you've got, um, you've got what?
Yeah, but these were.
Six of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, you've got six small funds.
So is there a way if we combine them into a line item, one line item to keep notes on?
It, that's really tough. They were set up separately because they all have a different intent.
So what is your recommendation?
So we need to make sure that whatever that intent was when the money was raised or donated, that we follow it.
I guess my question is, how can we do that, assuming, you know, knowing that there will be changes, you know, both on the board, you know, like long-term recovery, we can't count on that.
Right. A few of them, we know what it was for, it's very specific. Um, this legacy though, I'm not sure.
There's two of those.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the legacy money was originally given for. Um.
I'm confused. Are, are we needing to spend it?
Yes.
Edie, can you explain a little bit of what we're talking about for the public and the rest of the board regards to the, these funds that we're talking about? They weren't something, they're something that's been in there over many, many years, correct?
Oh, yeah, these funds were set up long before I came. And, um, they were either fundraised or they were donated for a special purpose. For whatever reason, the money was not all spent. And they're sitting on the books now. And Rockingham has six of these small funds.
What's the total amount?
Eight, twelve, around fifteen, twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So I guess, you know, how do we figure out what each of these is meant to be?
I was, I was going to start from, let's start from the first one.
Yeah.
So if there's one that says homework club for Central Elementary School, it's one thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. So that one seems like the intent was fairly straightforward, is to be used for the homework club at Central Elementary School.
Is there a homework club still there?
Could you raise some money to re-advocate for it? With W one.
Is there any after-school tutoring or anything that happens?
There's an after-school program, but that's handled by the Y.
So how do we spend money for a program that's to fund? I mean, we do have homework club in the middle school as part of the name program.
Right.
So I don't know if that would satisfy the helping fund.
So, yeah, so with the intent of the money, so to me, this money was, the intent was to help, was to go to Central, so wherever the money came from, this was designated for Central Elementary School, so do we look at, does Keith look at what is closest to the homework club or some program that he has that could use?
Can we find the use for it?
I mean, that would, that would be my suggestion, is that, so for this one, Keith comes back to us next meeting or the meeting after and says, this is how I would like to disperse these funds, to help this group, and we approve that. The next two are a little bit tougher, because those are the legacy savings accounts. One is four thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and one is eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And I have no idea what legacy is. Is it someone's name or is it, it doesn't sound like it? It sounds like it was just.
So is there any paperwork that would be associated with these accounts or you've not run into any?
I haven't run into anything.
It's just been sitting there for so long.
Yeah. It's probably been there for fifteen, twenty years.
I'm actually, I'm actually put something in, because we had talked about this before and I put in a P O for musical instruments for the school, that would probably take someone out to work. Of the legacy.
Yeah, I think that belongs to Central too.
Oh, the legacy belongs to Central?
Both of them?
I think so, yeah.
Everything here seems to belong to Central.
I wonder if, um.
Somebody is.
There was a, you know, a blurb, however people get out to news to the public, I'm really old fashioned, and just ask if anyone has information, you know, historical information as to what it might be, but barring that.
Maybe the first person, maybe it's Keith, Chris Kibby, Chris Kibby might be the first person that we might ask, since he was here forever in a day. From like kindergarten through being superintendent of schools, right?
Right, but there are many people in the community who might happen to know, oh, my grandfather did. You know, I, I don't know.
This money is, is legacy, yeah, yeah.
So how do we go about that? Put it in one of those ads in the paper that the Wind and Northeast, or the Rockingham School District has legacy fund accounts that we would like information on?
Well, I was thinking in the school newsletter, but you're right, probably people aren't at the school anymore.
Aren't even watching tonight.
So if we make a good faith effort to try and then fall back on if it's assigned to Central, that the principal gives us a idea of what they could use for, that would be most helpful.
So one of those is four thousand one hundred ninety-four and the other one's eight thousand seven hundred and fifty, so that's a sizable chunk of change that if we could figure out what to do with, would probably help.
Who would push back on how that was spent, like if, you know, allocated the funds for something and there was a, I don't know, a complaint that it wasn't following the original intent? Does that, does that come from whoever originally?
I think that would see what Edie's thought is us doing the due diligence of using it the way it was described to be used, so I think if we probably, if we do a certain amount of due diligence, that we tried to figure out what it was supposed to be used for, and we couldn't, like these two, we can't, just can't find out what, where the, where the money came from, then I think we could, then I think we probably all feel okay about going ahead, but I think we, I think what Edie wants us to do is a little bit of due diligence of where did this money come from, what it was, was it meant for? If we can't figure that out, then I don't think anybody's going to come forward, but at least making the effort to find out that you know, Josh's grandmother donated it for new band uniforms and forgot to tell anybody.
I think what would be helpful, I mean, we could probably start to figure out a little bit more if we knew how old.
And that's tough, because we can get back into the previous software, but we can't go back further than two thousand and eight.
If we looked at old budgets, right, the old
Yeah.
booklets for town meeting.
We might be able to find something there.
By when they showed up first.
I think several files and things were destroyed because of mold when they moved from Ait Atkinson's over. So I think there was a lot of stuff that was moldy that went.
So can we use a, or despite a higher attempt to find out where the money came from?
Well, I was just thinking if like there was a convenient stack, but it sounds like there's not a convenient stack.
We have looked everywhere and we've asked and I, I have, they're successful.
So it sounds like, I mean, you were looking for it when Chris was there, right?
Um, but Chris wasn't helping me. Um, I was looking for
So we'd never asked him?
for it to try to figure out where it came from. And I called and asked people, um, and it was here when I came and it was here in two thousand and eight, but I can't go back any further than that.
So those two need a bit more research to figure out what to do with. Um, Central Elementary C D for the amount of three thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. I think Ed came up with a grand idea for that C D is to, nice privacy fence for the playground.
I know, I've talked to Cindy about that and her, she recalls that we haven't been able to access that because the signers on that C D no longer exist in the area or something along those lines. Is that?
Well, the new treasurer would, the new town treasurer, she does the Rockingham that we would get if she hasn't already been added, and I think she's on all of our accounts, that yeah, we could, um, we could get a signer easy enough, but that doesn't tell us anything.
But if, if we if we know who the original signers were, we might be able to track down some information that way.
I don't even know if I can find that.
Probably Eddie Green herself, or something.
Yeah, maybe.
One, two, three, that was number four.
We know about Larry.
Number five is Larry Wonderly Memorial Donation.
We already started spending that.
Huh?
Yeah.
There you go.
Sorry?
We've already started spending that.
That one's fine.
And then there's a tech reserve for all schools.
And we went back and I think the final decision was to split it three ways. Um, we went all the way back, money was added and.
It was originally intended to buy Commodore sixty-four.
No, probably, the wheels have.
Fancy ball boy, eventually come out with.
How much is that one?
Um, two thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Seven.
So there's the three that, which are the big, because there's like twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, about sixteen thousand dollars, and those other three.
All for Central?
No.
Well, you said both legacies are for Central, right?
I already found out there's.
So there's a email that Christine sent that says legacy savings of twelve thousand nine hundred and forty-four. It is my understanding that this was donated by the Stankis family. I'm not
Kiweden?
I'm not entirely sure when. I have old, old main statements. It looks like from the paperwork that it was used some for Kiweden by the middle school, but my notes say it can be used for any school.
So that would, so that would.
So she's done more research.
How much was that?
That's the twelve nine.
Twelve thousand and twelve nine.
She's buying the two legacies.
So the legacies, the legacy C D and the legacy savings account?
Yeah.
But not the Central Elementary C D?
Right, the Central Elementary C D, it says it was funds from the Marie Edward Estate she passed in nineteen seventy-two. It's going to be used by third graders at Central Elementary School.
Third graders.
Yeah, so she's found some files that I didn't find.
We're going to be retiring advancing.
Well, if the, if the legacy funding, I mean, it sounds like your recommendation from the research is to split it between the three schools.
No, that was the tech money.
Well, what was the?
Oh, what she just read from legacy.
Oh, it could be spent by any of the schools.
For any school, yeah.
But it was originally used for Kiweden?
It just says it was donated, yeah. I have old, old main statements, it looks like from the paperwork that it was used some for Kiweden by the middle school, my notes say it can be used for any school. And the beginning of her email says, these funds have been around since nineteen oh dirt.
So.
So G's done a lot more research and been a lot more successful than I ever was.
So, I mean, it does look like, you know, any one of the three schools can access that twelve nine.
Or like enrichment, it sounds like.
Right, so if we wanted to, if, to Edie's point of trying to stick to the original purpose, if it was originally for like Camp Kiweden.
Well, that's what they used it for, that doesn't mean that's what it was donated for, is how I interpreted that.
For the record, Henny Green was around until nineteen sixteen, I just looked it up, so it could have been.
Well, if that's what they used it for, I would, I'm assuming that that was, you know, assuming that was the intent is one of, is an option to use this, do we, can we, and I, how, how quickly do we have to use it, or do we have to just allocate?
Well, I think the auditors would like to see it on when they come back next year to audit.
My recommendation would be to allocate the money equally between the three schools to enough to decide how they'd like to use it for student enrichment.
And the Camp Kiweden thing made me want to make the same recommendation, but perhaps they use it towards some of the field trips they do, like um, nature's classroom and the, um, I don't know if they still, they used to go to, where was it that our kids all went to? That place in New Hampshire where they camped out for a few days?
Camp Dakota.
Yeah.
And now we're doing the fourth grade overnight in Boston at the Museum of Signs.
Some sort, you know, that, that maybe this money can be used for, to help fund or support some trips like that and.
I think as long as you use it for enrichment, that's something.
I would say that it's.
Come up to Richmond, how's the school? Forty-three, fourteen, ninety-two per, four, four thousand three hundred and fourteen point ninety-two per school, ninety-two cents per school. We split it three ways.
So that would be my recommendation for that.
Okay. So here's another question thrown in there. We want to split it up on a like per pupil percentage basis? Sorry?
I would think that makes some sense. I mean, if it's going to go to supporting student programs.
So much for student interest.
This is about a question, if you're using it for trips, are these trips something that the budget funds? I think we would want to use it for something that the budget doesn't fund? Like it is, like, or something one-time thing that it will last longer, like instruments or things like that?
I was thinking that.
I was, my recommendation is that we leave it for student enrichment.
Because that, these are spectrum like tests and leave it up to the principal.
It's not just trips, like it's that way, if it wants to fund instruments or something that there is funding for that. I'm not opposed to doing the, based on percentage, based on population of the school. All right.
So with all three of those accounts or just those two?
Well, those two are meant for student enrichment at any school. I think the other one sounds like it is for Central.
Central.
The first one's for Central and Keith was going to look at something that would be on par with the homework club for that one. The two legacy accounts, we will split up amongst the schools on a
Enrollment?
enrollment base percentage. Central Elementary, there's still that C D.
Which was donated without, doesn't sound like any strings attached.
The Larry Wonderly, sounds like they're already, it's not what we're doing, and the tech reserve.
We were going to split three ways, because that was money that was um, from surplus and then additional money from another surplus and then additional money and meanwhile, everyone's spending it. Um, so, um, it just seemed the fairest. just to split it three ways, but...
So you're ready to make all those motions, Martha?
Sure.
Or Krista, Krista took notes.
Yeah, well, you have to do it.
I think you just recapped it.
Yes, so moved. Did that work?
Did you capture it?
Uh, let me see here. The legacy funds will be split up based on enrollment percentage among the three schools. The Larry, Larry Wonderly fund is currently being used by the middle school, so I'm not sure what the motion is there. And then funds that were created for Central Element, the Central Elementary School.
So there's two different funds for the Central Elementary School? There's the, what was the first that we...
Yeah, so maybe there needs to be different motions.
So, I, I think we can do it all in one. If we, if we do it, a motion to disperse funds. Approval of fund money expenditures as follows. Homework Clubs, Central Elementary School, balance of 1,948 dollars and fifty-six cents. The principal will bring a proposal back to the board on how he wants to... Do we need a proposal from Keith on how he wants to use those? Or that he can use them for a, I don't think so. Or we just need to approve it so we can, so that, so the, the, the board authorizes a Central Elementary principal to use those in a manner related to its purpose? Its purpose, initial purpose of helping kids with their homework? Yes. Legacy savings account of 4,194 dollars and one cent, and the legacy C D account, in the amount of 8,757 dollars and seventy-seven cents, will be combined and split amongst the three schools on an enrollment basis, or used for enrichment programs, programming?
Or Richmond, student enrichment.
Student enrichment?
It's like a five-year-old thing.
Yeah, we don't wanna just spend it.
Okay. Central Elementary School C D will be, the business manager will help them open that back up so that they can access it and figure out how to use it. The Larry Wonderly Memorial Donation, in the amount of 1,570 dollars, will be, is being, currently being utilized by the Falls Middle School. The Tech Reserve for all schools, in the amount of 2,888 dollars and thirty-eight cents, will be dividedly, divided evenly amongst the three schools. Do we want Josh to read that motion back to us now?
Yeah, I looked up the dollar amounts, I was gonna get the motion back after.
Okay.
So the legacy funds for the set amounts will be split up on an enrollment-based percentage. I'm sorry, actually, the legacy accounts for the amounts will be combined and split amongst the three schools on an enrollment basis to be used for student enrichment. Central Elementary School's C D, the business manager will assist in reopening it so that it can be utilized.
By Central.
By Central Elementary. Um, it's Larry Wonderly, the Larry Wonderly Foundation, you said is...
The Larry Wonderly Memorial Donation.
Memorial Donation, you said is being utilized, should I say will be utilized?
It is currently.
Doesn't really need a motion.
Yeah.
No. That's a relatively new one.
Okay, so we can scratch that one off with a motion.
Take that out.
And the Tech Reserves for all schools, do we need that one on there? Or are you just going ahead and...
We'll split it three ways.
Right, but do you need a motion on that one for us?
Okay.
So it's really just the Homework Club, the legacy, and the C D?
Yeah. Yep.
Hey, this is a good problem.
Yeah, you guys seem to attract money.
All in favor of...
He hasn't opened it.
All in favor of Kristen's motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposed? We have it. Um, we did nine E earlier, the request for the first community for installation of playground fencing. Nine F, approved joint use of facilities agreement attached. So this is the joint use of facilities agreement with us and the town of Rockingham for the Wells Street Playground for a period of September 1st, 2018, through August 31st, 2023. Did everyone get this in their packet and read it?
I have a question. Have we ever entered in this kind of agreement before?
Yeah, that's, that's the same agreement, just the date's changed.
Did you have any thoughts about this with you?
No, I, I, I...
It seems good to you? I'll make a motion that we approve the joint use of facilities agreement with the town of Rockingham, and that we have with hallway, chairman, board, sign it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You guys have it? This one, you want me to sign? Sure. So I, I do have a question. Do we, when, do you know when the last time you did the one with the high school and the football field is? Because we have a similar agreement with them.
Oh, with the Hadley Field?
Hadley Field, yeah.
I'll have to research that.
That's a good question.
I'll need to date this, too.
Those I have better luck finding, but not the bank statements.
I believe we have them? Nope. Director's comments? Ed, I'll start with you to the left. I'm tired. Um, agenda items for the next board meeting?
We had a couple of...
Yeah, what I have right now is the retirement incentive, the board goals to Golden Hill property, YMCA update, parking passes for the Falls Middle School teachers and staff. Can we add Central to that too? Because you want Central to the...
Is that the parking?
Yeah.
Sure.
I don't know how often you people get tickets, but...
I don't think folks get tickets, but they're certainly parking all over the place.
Yeah.
They certainly don't fit all of them.
Right, okay. If we're gonna get passes for one school, just one for all teachers of the Rockingham School District, which would include, I assume, ERAs who are working for the WNESU.
Yeah, anyone working in the building, sure.
And the A and I have next to me.
Okay, and budget?
So I will not be a representative.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.